The June 20th Select Board Meeting to order. I need to have someone make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion that we, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was quick. Um, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Second. You'll say, and I say all in favor of the agenda as read, uh, written, please say aye.
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 Item two, we go into executive session. To interview three candidates for, um, positions with the town. Do we have a motion then to executive session?
Um. I make a motion regarding the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee per one Vermont's. BSA. Three, one, three, three, A, three. To include the town manager and candidates for fire warden and deputy fire warden.
Second.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Now we enter executive session. Okay, we are coming out of executive session at what time?
Seven twenty-one.
Seven twenty-one, no, no official action taken. Um, it will come with our appointments later on. Um. So thank you all for coming this evening. Um, a quick. Um, I don't want to say change, but, um, when anyone from the audience wants to speak tonight, we would like you to go to this makeshift where you sign in. And use that speaker only because as we reviewed last meeting, nothing that anyone said in the audience could be heard. On the, uh, official record, so we, we, it's not that we're trying to separate you from your seat and make you go there. It just needs to be part of the record. So if you raise your hand, I will, um, know, I recognize you and then go out, state your name. We have a new, uh, uh, secretary taking reports tonight, so she may not know everyone in present, so if you give your name first and then your comment, that would be great. Uh, thank you very much. Um. We are now doing, uh, reoccurring matters, first of which is the approval of the select board minutes from the June tenth meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes with one small edit to the. We just had a typo of like. I, now I'm gonna get the numbers mixed up because I'm looking at the wrong numbers and I can't remember the right numbers, but it was a five oh two three C, but it should be. Five oh one C six.
Which page was that on?
Uh, page five. So, just a.
Okay.
Just a.
Do we have a second for a minute?
Second.
Okay. Um, I also, Ralph called me today when he said that he could not attend. He wanted to notate a, either a change or a correction, but, um, on page six, where we were talking about the Act two fifty repeal. Um, it had, he had stated that there was a hundred dollar charge to appeal a zoning permit. And he said that he followed that up, um, with his planning commission and the fee is two fifty. We wanted to make sure that was correct in the minutes. Any other correction? Things, none heard? All in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote, no one? Minutes passed. Um, now we have the warrant from June twenty-fourth.
I make a motion that we approve the warrant for June twenty-fourth.
Second. Your motion second. Any questions? Howard? You may ask a question. Thank you, and you listen.
Rarely.
Rarely, thank you, Claire.
Hi, I'm Claire, uh, Stone, A S T O N E. And, um, I was wondering if there's any money in the warrant for Newton. From, from this budget. It, Newton looks, looks to be complete, and I wondered if there was any paving money. In this.
Go ahead.
Warrant. That addresses.
Yes.
So there's a, a bill on the first page to Bruce Meacham. For a hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and ten cents, which is the balance from the sealed bid that he made to do the work to reconstruct Newton Road. And that will be seventy-five percent reimbursed by FEMA and seventeen and a half percent reimbursed by the state of Vermont. So we're responsible for seven and a half percent.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that, that was mine.
Okay, any other questions? Your motion in a second on the warrant, all in favor of paying the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one? That warrant is passed, and we have a second warrant. For library grant. We have a motion on that.
I make a motion that will approve the warrant for one thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any questions on that?
As I understand, it's just a pass through that we, because we administer the, you know.
All in favor of the library grant warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Both, no one? We have paid the bills. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I submitted my report in advance. I don't have anything to add to it. I just would like to highlight a couple of items. One is to thank the select board, uh, for the use of the one percent fund toward the windows of the town clerk's office, which have been replaced. Um, there will still be some work yet to do, uh, as some of, there were three panes of glass that were manufactured to improper dimensions, so they're gonna be replaced. Um, and related to the library warrant, you'll see there's a sign on the door at the library. Their schedule now is to be open through, I think, August second. And then they will be reopening at the newly renovated library building September third. And then the month of September, they're, um, wanting to be great partners with us, and they're going to do some work in the main room on the lower level here to try to put it into a condition where it can be, uh, the meeting space again. So if there's, you know, dings in the sheet rock and things of that nature, they're, they're gonna take care of that in September, so they turn over to us a room that will be, uh, useful for us. For board purposes. Happy to answer questions.
Questions for the town manager from the board? Questions for the town manager on his report from the public? Thank you very much. Uh, rec department, uh, report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is my rec department report for June twenty-fourth. The Brandon Rec will be partnering with Otter Valley's Walking Stick Theater to offer a community musical production of The Lucky Stiff, an offbeat hilarious murder mystery farce. Auditions on June twenty-seventh, June thirtieth. Uh, practices for the September performances will be held at the Otter Valley Auditorium. Sign up for an audition slot. There's a tiny URL. Thing, and this is, uh, this is something that we paid for and get reimbursed back on the admissions, which will cover the cost of putting this production on. Jeff Hall, the, uh, director, volunteering his time, musicians are volunteering their time, so the costs, upfront costs were for purchasing the, uh, purchasing the rights to produce it, and again, there'll be three showings in September. Um, June twenty-eighth, uh, we'll see Brandon Rec host a summer kickoff car meet in the Otter Valley Union High School parking lot. This is geared, pun intended, toward owners who want to show off their tuner cars, but all types are welcome from five PM to nine PM. First of three sessions of summer dance intensives with Ms. Michaela kickoff today at the twenty-five Rossiter Street Dance Studio. Other weeks are July twenty-second and August twelfth. Thanks to an enthusiastic parent coach, Alex Barnhart, kiddos in pre, uh, grades pre K through six can have some summer baseball fun. Starting July ninth, this weekly baseball clinic experience will be hosted at the Nashaby School. Summer adult basketball sees a change in venue. Schedule for pickup Tuesday, seven to nine at the Nashaby School Gymnasium. Thursday, seven to nine and sun, nine PM and Sunday, seven to nine AM at Otter Valley Union High School. Due to some summer maintenance works being performed at the Otter Valley North Campus Gymnasium, pickleball times and locations have changed. The Nashaby School will host Thursdays, four to eight, Saturdays, eleven to one, and Sundays, eleven to three. I met with Becca Washburn from the Vermont Agency of Natural Resources Department of Forests, Parks and Recreation at Estorbrook on June twentieth. This was a site visit to help with determining our compliance with the terms agreed to when accepting the land water conservation fund monies that helped establish the park in the eighties. She also informed us that a new round of L W C F funding is available and encouraged the town to consider applying. A project that we would consider that is closest to shovel-ready is a disc golf course trail system on the town-owned parcel behind the American Legion. This is one that we had applied for a grant and got denied, uh, in December. She's also sending new stickers for signage, helping to identify L W C F sites. The Estorbrook Park one is tired and will be putting one up in Kennedy Park. That is my rec report. Actually, I have something to add. Uh, on the seventeenth of June and today, the twenty-fourth, uh, we've been visited again by these folks from, uh, youth, uh, organization that do camps. Churches will pay to be a part of this ministry, and they send people out and to do ministry, to do work in communities. Uh, they were a big part of doing a lot of work for us pre-COVID. COVID sort of ravished them a bit. They're starting to make a comeback. They found a place to stay again in Rutland. So on the seventeenth, uh, they worked down at the wastewater treatment facility doing some painting, some cleanup work. And today, they did some painting at the Nashaby School at our dugouts there, and then when we pulled, if you'll notice, if you walk through town, it was raining when we did it, now it's dry. You won't find a place to sit. The park benches have all been pulled. They have them, have their weekly, uh, their yearly coat of stain put on there, and they stained all fourteen, fifteen benches down at Estorbrook Park. They'll be in town tomorrow staining the deck at Kennedy Park and doing the spraying, uh, for weeds on the, uh, on the, uh, bricks, sidewalk bricks. So if you see them, wave hi there. This group this week is from, uh, is from Virginia, up here from around, uh, uh, McLean, Virginia, so, um, yes, they've been, again, amazing free work, and they're really great people.
Questions, um?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yep.
So, um, are you in fact, uh, applying for the, the new round of L W C F funding?
I'm, I am considering the possibility. I would not apply without first checking with the select board to make sure it was okay. We don't have a, we have a grant application from our VoRec grant together, but I'd want to get together with the, the folks that are spearheading the effort, the disc golf people, to make sure they're still on board to do the volunteer work that they thought about doing, and then at that point, I would have asked the select board permission to apply for that grant.
Other questions from the board? Claire, I see your hand. Ah, the microphone, come on, hold on, hold on, I'll pass you if you get.
Old age. Claire here. Seventy-one. Cut me some slack. Uh-huh. The question was about, uh, the lawn spray, the spraying of the weeds between the sidewalk. Uh, what they're using, or that it's not toxic, you know, not, not everybody's in the same place with the things they use.
So it's very toxic. No, I, I, we have soap, soap. Uh, add, add some salt and vinegar. It's a mixture of soap, add some salt and vinegar. We use a non-toxic. Right? Plus, we don't want to eat away the bricks.
Other questions for the rec director? Okay, moving on. Um, appointments. We have numerous appointments for the evening. Um, how would the board like to take them?
Um, I make a motion that we appoint, um, Linwood, um, Bobby as a fire warden for a five-year term.
Second.
Motion in a second, any additional discussion? Okay, you want to, uh, vote individually each time or get all of these?
Individually each time.
Okay. And we have a motion in a second for the fire warden to remain Linwood Bobby for the next five years. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, no one?
So then I make a motion to appoint John Wyman as the deputy fire warden. Um, for a five-year term.
Nice. Tell you.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor of naming John Wyman deputy fire warden? Please say aye.
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 I'll try to make it a little bit more efficient on this next one.
Okay. Rutland Regional Transportation Council Representative.
I, I make a motion that we appoint the following three people for the following three positions. Jeremy Disorder for the Rutland Region Transportation Council Representative, Seth Hopkins for the Rutland Region Transportation Council Altern, alternate, and Lisa Peluso for the Rutland Regional Planning Commission alternate.
We have three nominations. We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Chair.
Yes.
I, I just would love, uh, for the community to know that I've got my name on this, uh, as the alternate, just so that somebody goes from Brandon, but I am very happy for someone else to be appointed alternate if someone wants to express interest. Uh, Jeremy's our highway division chief, so he's like intimately involved with this. He's expecting to be able to attend the transportation council meetings on a regular basis, but if anyone else would like to go along, learn about transportation issues in the region, the Rutland County region, it's a great opportunity to do that.
Have anyone else that would be interested in that? Mayor Reston has her hand up. Would you, you would be interested? Okay, would you like to?
I don't know what we have to do.
You could make an amendment.
Yep.
Oh, to change out the name for a name.
Would an alternative, would an alternate count as a tag along, Claire? Yeah. Okay. So we'll leave it.
These are open to the public meetings, the Rutland Region Transportation Council, so, um, I can link you up with their regular meeting schedule. I think it's ten meetings a year. Is the Rutland Regional, uh, they have moved. Anybody who has business with the Rutland Region Transport, Rutland Region Planning Commission or Transportation Council, they've moved out of the Opera House on Merchants Row, and they're now at sixteen Evelyn Street, which is basically behind where they used to be facing the train station.
So then you could get your feet wet by attending that?
Yeah.
From the water, it's okay. So we're back still to the original motion? Okay, all in favor of naming Jeremy, Seth, and Lisa to those three positions, please say aye.
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 Both, no one? And Claire will tag along and step in next year maybe? Okay. Um. Next item on the agenda is letter of support for V C R D community visit. Um, that was the talk we had last week. I'll let you say anything or?
I, I did put in the packet as requested by the board. I put in the, uh, overview of the program that had initially introduced it, and right, this is just following up on the presentation that was made, um. Actually, Bill is tomorrow. Bill is going to the conference of this group, right, in Hardwood?
Council, uh, uh, the Verma- Gosh, Vermont Council. I don't, yeah, no, not that. Oh, another, another acronym, V C D A, Vermont, sorry. Community Development Association.
Apologies, this is Council on Rural, Rural Development, this is different. But it's all in the community building concept.
Um, I, I certainly feel that it would be good for us to, uh, become involved with the, uh, community visit program. I don't know if anyone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with this. I don't see how it could hurt, and it seems like there's lots of ways that it could help. And I, I really don't see much of a downside.
Second, from anyone?
If you say you said.
I will second. We have a motion in a second. Other discussion?
This is just to say that we're interested, and then they'll get back to us in several months. Maybe, no, they said the end of the summer, maybe?
Yeah, with the end of the summer is when they start, and it would be something that would happen next year.
Okay.
Right? You may. You can move your chair up there.
Yeah. Claire, yeah, um, now I forgot what I wanted to ask you. Is the public involved with that community service? Because we've certainly had some bumps in the last few months, and it would be really nice to, um, have some process about that, I think.
That we sort of all. That's, that's, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
No.
That is, um, if you listen to the the people who visit us, to their informational spiel, it was basically just talking about how they meet the community where they're at and get as much input from as many people, from as many different.
You can have that.
I, I saw. And I thought it was so inclusive, like I pictured being in a schoolroom, writing your idea down, sticking it on the wall, and the town people do this, and then we look at those issues together and see where people are at.
Like that's sort of their vein of thought. I don't know specifics.
Exactly. It's very inclusive. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? We have a second. Any other comments or questions from the public on this item? None heard? Uh, all in favor of, uh, sending in a letter asking them to accept us as a town? Uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, no one? Good on that. Uh, item eight, request for use of local option tax funds. What you would claim that, Ms. Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is, uh, Mr. Coolidge and I were checking notes with each other this morning. This is probably the third, but maybe the fourth time that the board is being requested to make the final closeout payment for segment six. Not that you've ignored it in the past or that past boards have ignored it. It has always been approved. If you remember when the local option tax was first set up, it was restricted. Um, it is still restricted, and it's used to capital projects within the town, and the select board exercised a tremendous amount of restraint for a number of years uh, by not spending a dollar of it until segment six was basically done and the big payment was due from it. So that happened. And then since then, we have had at least one or maybe two other, um, letters from the town treasurer. So s- I talked with Sue, and, uh, I did provide to the board Sue's year-by-year running balance on Fund forty-six, which is the Route seven, segment six project. At this point, it's not the case that we're getting additional bills in from engineers or from state inspections or anything like that. So that was the case with some previous, um, final, quote unquote, final payments. What's happening now is this is kind of after Sue has observed a long enough period of inactivity, and we are far enough past the end of the construction of the project, and the state has actually issued the document that says this is closed, save the stuff for seven years, right? So from their point of view, nothing else is coming down the pike. And so what she's asking for at this point is for the board to balance the town's books by taking twenty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents from the local option tax fund and putting it to Fund forty-six, which will balance Fund forty-six to zero dollars. So it's not for anything new at this point. Um, Fund forty-six has been carrying sometimes sometimes a few million dollars of surplus, sometimes, um, several million dollars of deficit, and it's all being floated by the town's other funds in the general fund, in, in the, uh, fund accounting kind of policy.
What is the title of Fund forty-six?
Fund forty-six is Route seven, segment six. It does have little sub-funds. There was, um, underground utilities is its own thing, construction was its own thing. Uh, the water project, you remember there was like a little prelude to segment six water project tying in Brandon and Ally and stuff? And, uh, I think tho- I think those were the, the three big amounts.
But just balancing?
This is the balancing, right, this is balancing what has been laid out and will not be reimbursed.
Do we have a motion from the board to, uh, transfer uh, twenty-four thousand four hundred from Fund seventy to Fund forty-six?
Yeah, I, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any additional discussion or questions regarding that?
I, I guess it goes without saying that likely to be the last time.
You're gonna hold me to this, right? Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I would like to have a high degree of confidence that the forty-six is, is capped.
I, I think that the, the thing that would give me the highest degree of confidence saying that is that we did get the final, like, actual letter from the state saying that they consider the project to be closed.
And so if there's new expenses, we consider those to be part of our normal running of.
Well, it's our road, right? So, right, you know, every, uh, we, we have these periodic needs to clean out the storm, uh, the storm, storm drain chambers and so forth and have them inspected. Those are in the town budget now as part of our ongoing highway department operations, now that we've accepted the work.
Did you have something else?
I was going to mention, I know that Sue's, um, year-by-year running total thing, I hope you found it, you know, helpful in some way. She and I both agreed it would be super helpful at one point to basically take all of those years and smash them into one kind of executive summary of this is what was spent on engineering, this is what was spent on administration, this is what was spent on construction, here's the funds that came in, here's the funds that were the town's share. So you know, the, you remember the utilities were fifty percent on the town, the underground utilities were fifty percent on the town and fifty percent on the state, but most of the rest of the work was five percent on the town, fifteen percent on the state, and eighty percent on the federal highway administration. So just kind of having a synaptic view, and she and I looked at the spreadsheets and they were complex enough that it wasn't something that we could pull together today. But she and I will work on them and try and get to like a, a holistic, what, what were the results of segment six for the next meeting?
Thank you.
I like that idea, especially in light of thinking about Union Street projects and just things we can learn from it.
Okay, um, we're ready to vote on this. All in favor of, uh, making the transfer? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, no one? We have a problem. Um. Item nine, assignment of funds. This is an annual move at the end of our, uh, fiscal year to fold some monies over. I'll let Seth explain them to everyone.
So the, um, information above the line across the page there are the three items that we would like to be assigned. Sometimes the word encumbrance used to be used, right? So if that's familiar. Uh, ten thousand dollars of winter sand has been bought with this year's budget, but will not be used until FY twenty-five, so that would be one reason. Uh, seven thousand dollars, the tree warden has warned some, uh, trees to be removed that are deficient. Again, those were warned in FY twenty-four, but because of bird nesting and stuff like that, um, we're going to plan to remove the trees late in the summer or in the fall, so that's another encumbrance. The office equipment line in the town clerk's department was not expended, but she projects needing more than is budgeted next year to replace some of the computers. So I think there's twelve hundred dollars in her line right now, so this would put her closer to twenty-two hundred dollars. And then, if I may, um, I've had some conversation just today with the energy committee. They would like to encumber two thousand dollars of their FY twenty-four budget line item because, um, the Mini MRP grant, the four thousand dollar MRP grant has been deemed a good source or an appropriate source of funds for something that the energy committee already bought out of its budget. So this would be changing how that gets paid for. The energy committee purchased at Brandon Lumber a number of, um, yard, uh, electric yard tools, right? Lawn mowers, weed whackers, things of that nature. And it's for a lending library that they intend to station around the town so that people can borrow it and try out an electric lawnmower on their lawn and try out electric hedge clippers or whatever the stuff is. And that was paid out of the town budget line for the energy committee, but now the, uh, folks at RRPC have said that would be a good use of the Mini MRP, so we're recommending that, that, uh, Jackie make that adjusting entry so that that would free up two thousand dollars of the energy committee funded budget for FY twenty-four. And then in FY twenty-five, they would plan to expend that at least partially on their building a couple of little trailers where they will put this equipment so that it can be stationed out in different neighborhoods for periods of time.
So we have the request. Would any of the board members like to make a motion on those items?
Um, do you have a total that you'd like or just, um?
Two.
So they actually have to, you can do it all as one thing. You can say, you know, I vote to approve this list. Um, but the point of them is that they're gonna be restricted for. but the point of them is that they're going to be restricted for exactly the stated purpose.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, I do make a motion that we approve the list.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, additional discussion?
Just for clarity.
Are you approving the list as I s- uh, with the additional item that I suggested verbally?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so for, be clear, we're voting on the same thing. The list is uh, ten thousand dollars for winter sand, seven thousand dollars for tree removal, one thousand dollars for office equipment, and two thousand dollars to the energy committee. Any other discussion? All in favor of encumbering these funds? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That's tough.
Want to thank Jackie. Uh, she's here tonight. Jackie Savela is our bookkeeper and she uh, worked very closely with all of the department heads and the committee chairs in some cases and appreciate, um, that she took the time and did this up for us.
Um, now we are up to public comment and participation for items that are not on our agenda. Anyone like to speak? Karen?
Karen Farwell, forty-nine Park Street. I'm gonna read because I find this a little overwhelming. I'm not a public speaker. Last week, the town manager made an inaccurate accusation. I'll read it from the minutes. They're in your packet. Mr. Hopkins stated that he used his own money to file the change, referring to the change of registered agent for BIC, and noted Ms. Farwell's comments are tiresome and border on harassing of public officials. The Brandon Industrial Corporation chooses their own directors, and they have a president, vice president, and a treasurer, none of whom are Mr. Hopkins, unquote. First, Mr. Hopkins is not a public official. He's a town employee. Secondly, for context, I'm gonna quote two statements from greater brains than I. First, transparency is a fundamental component of democratic government and addresses the rights of citizens to know about activities of their government. Also, too much secrecy in government often leads to an abuse of power and a lack of accountability. With that context, last week, my comment that evoked a strong response was that I believe Mr. Hopkins is running BIC. That's the Brandon Industrial Corporation. And as such, that there is a conflict of interest with regard to the proposed project with Novus Energy. I have today shared with the entire select board a screenshot of the filing for BIC. Mr. Hopkins is listed as director and registered agent. Stephen Carr is listed as president and director. And his email contact is vermont@in2in.com, which is Mr. Hopkins' business. Tom Whitaker is listed as vice president and director. The registered address of BIC is our town office, forty-nine Center Street. The corporation is a five oh one C six, but more closely matches the description of a five oh one C two, and yes, I inadvertently transposed the numbers. Mr. Hopkins, with an unknown amount of involvement from Mr. Whitaker, is running BIC. He pays fees, files reports, makes decisions and signs con- signs contracts. It appears BIC will be contracting on Brandon's behalf with Novus Energy Development. It appears there is no documentation that I can find as yet. And there has been no thorough exploitation, explanation to the public of all that that program entails. And there's a lot. Shining a light on this matter is a matter of transparency and creating transparency and holding town employees accountable for telling the truth. If not, is not, by any stretch of the imagination, harassment. Therefore, my first question of two, I would like an apology either from Mr. Hopkins for saying what he said or from the select board for allowing the comments to stand.
Would you restate what you believe to be a misaccurate, an inaccurate statement I made?
Ms. Farwell's comments are tiresome and border on harassing of public officials.
You believe that to be an inaccurate statement by me?
I do.
That was an expression of my evaluation of the situation.
That's not an apology.
It's not intended to be.
Well, it's inaccurate. You are not a public official, sir. You are a town employee. And shining light and transparency on things that are being kept in the darkness is not harassment. And let me say again, that you said that you are not running BIC, but you are the registered agent and a director. The president and director is Stephen Carr, who is not operating at this time. And his email address reverts to your business, vermont@in2in. The registered address of BIC is the town office, forty-nine Center Street. And Tom Whitaker is listed as vice president and director. Don't know how much he's involved. There is no treasurer, which you stated. You're running BIC.
Um, what we tried to explain last time, and I guess I'll try again this time, is that we don't consider this to be a conflict of interest. We consider this to be a design. We specifically want our town manager to be involved with that industrial corporation. And so there's, um, the board doesn't feel that there's anything being hidden or, um, that we uh, are in the dark about.
I, I don't know how you feel whether you're in the dark or not, other than your statement. But I don't think the public has any understanding of this construct. And it hasn't been explained to them. They don't know what Brandon Industrial Corporation is. They don't know what it does. They don't know who the principals are, and there have been misstatements about who the principals are. They don't know that the registered address is the town office. I've begun putting together a chart of all of the past town managers and select boards and past town managers have not been registered with the state as a member of the Board of BIC. So it's all kind of a trust me statement from the select board. Um, and to call a member of the public who's not used to public speaking, but who has the best of intention, tiresome and bordering on harassment of public officials is extreme and offensive and creates, uh, an environment of intimidation that will make it difficult for any citizen to come here and stand up when they think something has gone awry.
I'll, I'll speak to this. So I think that, um, that I can relate to that feeling, quite honestly. The climate and the conversation in the past few months has been horrendous. And it has been nearly unbearable. And I absolutely can relate to the feeling you're having at your moments on the podium, but I would like to just um, say that like it's, it's, I, I understand. Um, additionally, I know that I myself have asked about the Brandon Industrial Corporation in meetings and had it explained to me because maybe for better or worse, I don't mind revealing my, you know, lack of knowledge in meetings. And so I have asked, it has been explained, and some of the information that you gave, I don't know what the Vermont website says, but my understanding was that James Leary, Jim Leary is the president now. So.
He is not listed with the state as such. He is not a legal officer.
Additionally, I'm gonna say that that was my understanding, but as a select board member, I don't have much to do with the Brandon Industrial Corporation, other than understanding if there's a poten- potential conflict of interest, which I don't have a concern about. And I, I would like to understand, like, if there's a conflict of interest, it makes me think that you believe somebody is benefiting. And I don't really understand where that, I, I asked you that in an email today.
I didn't get your email, Heather, before I came here, um, or I certainly would have responded, but that goes to my second question, so it's probably a perfect time to raise it. This plan to allow Novus Energy Development Corporation to build a solar array with us as the only client, giving us a discount of fifteen percent, yes. Um, it's, it's, it's moving at light speed. First of all, I got the, um, absolutely effusive, it could have been an exercise of writing in school, write an effusive letter of support to the Public Utility Commission that's dated to go out on or dated the, um, the eighteenth, I believe. I'll check and see. Um, but we met last on June tenth. That's when the board voted to go ahead and issue that letter. And on June twelfth, there was a fifteen-page legal document fired with, filed with the Public U- Utility Commission asking for, let's see, what did they call it? A declaratory ruling, which seems to be a land use exception ruling. I could be incorrect on that. In addition, I went out and looked at Novus. None of us have had any presentations on it. Um, we haven't been told all of the details of this deal, and it's a pretty big thing to switch away from a public utility and start, you know, having a private deal with a particular company. Novus is known for, um, two different main programs. One of them is energy savings without cost. Hey, that's kind of interesting, um, and, uh, and unbelievable, but interesting. And the pathway to ownership program. Now, this appears to be the program that um, two towns in particular, I think three, Barry, then maybe the city of Barry, Two Flavors of Barry, and, um, uh, is it Rockingham are using where they enter into a contract to take their energy from a dedicated solar array constructed, developed, and operated by uh, Novus Energy. And then at the end of year ten, there is an option to buy. So this is kind of a, you know, optional lease-to-buy thing. These are big deals. These are big issues. And they may be good for the town. I'm not saying they're not. But this is the kind of major activity or decision that, um, is going to be signed off on by, uh, the registered agent of BIC because BIC is involved in this deal. And it's something that the town ought to know about. And there are only two small references in the minutes of the Brandon Energy Commission, um, May and June, very small references. There's nothing in the planning commission notes or minutes. It's all being done very quietly and if unintentionally, still on the down low. And yet I stand here accused of being, wait, what were those words one more time? Let me see if I can find them. Tiresome and bordering on harassing of public officials. And I don't think that's what this is. I don't know how you'd like to close out this evening. I'd love my apology, but if not, I'd love the answer to when we could have a public meeting so that the citizens of Brandon can understand not only what is being committed to on their behalf and what the potential downside is, because there's no deal that doesn't have at least a potential downside, but also the potential upside and benefits, the intriguing notion that we would be going into the energy business in ten years.
I'm gonna try to step in for a minute and try to um, answer a few questions, because I think a lot of the public has no idea what, uh, Brandon Industrial Corp is, how it started, or where it came from and what its purpose, um, might have been. And I'm not sure I will be a hundred percent exact because I was not totally involved in it or not involved in it at all, but I've been here long enough to, to know a great part of the history. Um, back uh, in the nineteen eighties, when Brandon Training School was being shut down by the state, it was creating quite a economic uh, loss of jobs in the Vermont area, in the Brandon area. Um, and our, uh, legislator, Bob Woods, um, lobbied Vermont Legislature to try to help Brandon um, over that loss of income. Um, and, and, uh, he got the state of Vermont to give us a large piece of land up on the north side of the former Brandon Training School. Um, and it was given to an organization called BIC, Brandon Industrial Corp. It was to try to get some industry to come into Brandon. You're shaking your head.
Well, I was just gonna say, before we move too far past it, the land, I believe, was given mostly to V-Trans. V-Trans sold some of the land to Denneke. Denneke formed the Denneke Industrial Park. The guys that were running Denneke wanted to get out of it, and that's when the guys who formed the Brandon Industrial Corporation stepped in and took that land.
Again, I'm, I'm giving a basic history of it. It was a, a gift from the state owned lands to encourage in, in, to.
It wasn't. It was given to V-Trans. And V-Trans sold it to Denneke, and Denneke sold it to Brandon Industrial Corporation. But the very fact that no one in this room knows about a legal entity that our town manager is running is of concern, and it shouldn't be a problem if nothing strange is going on, but we should all be able to know about it.
I don't, I don't believe that he's running it and, and, um,
That's the definition of registered agent.
It is no different than when our past town manager was, was a town manager, and he wanted to set up the Green Lantern solar system up there to, for the benefit of the town of Brandon.
Dave Atherton was barred from being, sitting on the BIC, and you can go look up all of the information. He never was officially on BIC. You're right. He worked on the Green Lantern deal. There was also in that an exchange of land based on a loan that had been made that was going to go into default. So there was a negotiation for that land to be given in exchange for uh, removing the, you know, finalizing, closing out the loan. And that is the land that became BIC. All of this is like a lot of stuff going on with our money. And.
Going on with our money, but, but it's Brandon Industrial Corporation. If you have problems with something they're doing, go to their meeting. Our only, uh,
They don't have meetings.
Trading the brand, the electric, like we treat fuel purchases.
They don't have meetings, and they're not required.
Fuel bids, we're said, do we buy this much? You know, do we buy it at this price or do we buy it at this price? And we typically buy the least priced diesel fuel or the least priced, you know, other kinds of fuels that we use. In this case, this is electricity. And we're just saying, yes, if somebody wants to sell us electricity at a fifteen percent discount, that sounds like a good idea.
Well, I'd like to know what, who's gonna sign the contract?
Town, there's no obligation for the town to take over this project in ten years? You, you're creating a problem where there is none. And, and you're casting aspersions, suggesting somehow that we're getting rich off this.
What is the Novus Brandon Solar LLC?
What is what?
What is Novus Brandon Solar LLC?
I'm not familiar with it.
Well, the letter that was crafted and to be signed or has been signed by Doug Bailey is written to the Public Utility Commission, says, Dear Commissioners, Novus Brandon Solar LLC proposes to install and operate a one hundred and fifty watt kilowatt or net metered solar array on private land leased from and owned by Brandon Industrial Corporation. That being a portion of Lot F of the Edward Denneke Industrial Park on Robert Wood Drive in Brandon, Vermont.
Yeah, we, we approved that letter last time.
Then how can you approve this letter?
It's not committing us to any money.
How can you approve the letter when you don't know what Novus Brandon Solar LLC?
That select boards do all the time.
No, select boards do not all the time approve things with a legal entity that they don't know what it is.
This is the letter of recommendation. That's what they ask for from us. The, the, uh, novice that wants to build this.
What is the Novus Brandon Solar LLC?
The one that we're, um, wrote the letter of recommendation to, um, help them, uh, get their approval.
Novus is Novus Energy Development. Novus is Novus Energy Development LLC, not Novus Brandon Solar LLC. It's a different legal entity.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I drafted the letter based on a letter that the Planning Commission issued where that was identified and based on materials that were submitted to the Select Board at the Select Board meeting where this was considered. That's how it was phrased. It's a private solar developer. They have, as will be, this will be an echo of some previous experience. As was the case with the large development plan for the lower part of Carver Street. Right? These companies form a plan, and then they will create a smaller company within they'll create a smaller company to run an individual project. So my understanding would be that Novus is the big company, and Novus Brandon is the one that's going to be keeping track of this project.
Perhaps we could take the time to go and actually learn the history of and the current status of Brandon Industrial Corporation and who is running it, and what legal contracts and commitments will be signed on behalf of Brandon, either by BIC or by the town, and who the Brandon Solar, Novus Brandon Solar LLC is, and what, if any, conversations are being had about us having the option to buy this out in 10 years, which was resoundly rejected by the voters when a vote was put to us for a bond that was going to be self-funded for $500,000, even though it was said that we only needed, well, various different amounts ranging from 350 to 468 in notes that I've taken. But you know, projects always run over was a quote, again, that's on recording of our town manager. This is all loosey-goosey. Either you guys don't have all the details and you're punting, or somebody is keeping something to themselves, and the citizens of a Brandon have a right to know. And if you are making a wise economic decision, and it is transparent to us, we're going to support you all the way. But this feels like an end run to get the town-owned solar with an intermediate step, a two-step. And in the process, oh, yeah, what am I? I am.
The board is going to now recognize Cecil. Better handle.
Hello, my name is Cecil Renish Smith. The last name is spelled R E N I C H E hyphen Smith, traditional spelling. I just wanted to correct a couple of statements made that it has to do with legal terminology. Ms. Farwell, Farwell, I'm sorry, I keep getting that wrong. Ms. Farwell had stated that when about Mr. Hopkins running the bid, the term registered agent does not mean you are running anything. A registered agent is nothing but the person upon whom legal process can be served. If anyone is going to be suing a corporation, a limited liability corporation, and they need to serve process on someone, that's what the registered agent does. That's all they do.
It would be the President and the Board of Directors.
Hey, I want to let, please order, order here. Cecil, go ahead.
So again, my understanding, as was Ms. Nelson's, is that Jim Leary had recently been appointed the President. I may be wrong about that. But it is not uncommon for state websites to be delayed in updates. So the other point, the other point I wanted to make in terms of Novus Brandon Solar LLC is that whenever you have a very large corporation such as Novus Energy that is doing projects all around a town or a state or a country, they will always form a smaller LLC, which is a limited liability corporation. And the point of a limited liability corporation is that they are responsible for that specific project. And again, it all has to do with lawsuits and liability that that corporation is the one that is responsible for that project. They are not responsible for any other Novus projects, but they are with under the umbrella of Novus. So I mean, I just hope that just helps a little bit with understanding. I know legal terminology is can be arcane, and especially corporations. I mean, corporate tech terminology is often very difficult to understand. So I just wanted to make those points to maybe help people understand stuff.
It's very helpful that someone in this room knows those answers. I just, that board does not.
I have to say, I also take offense to your state that this is an end around to the defeated solar, because it has absolutely nothing to do with that. And and you're just making up more controversy here. And you cut me off in trying to give a history to the people about how and where the BIC started and came from. And while I'm giving a basic explanation. Please, please stop. Now, BIC is a totally separate entity. The town does not run it. The town is not, and it have all of the information on it. It never has. I'm giving you a base introduction to how that land came about, how it came to the town, and what its use is for. And the use is to create industry options for the town to attract, you know, spot for industry to come to. And unfortunately, no one is building great new industry on this side of the state of Vermont due to the fact that there is very poor transportation of products in and out. So the only thing that was ever built there was one warehouse that is storing, and then V-Trans got a piece of the land. How those came about, I'm not going to try to answer too exactly. But again, they are not to do with the town of Brandon. The Select Board has no power in what goes on there. We were only asked to state that we would support a solar project and have not have any problem with a solar project being up there, which is what our statement is. Our statement is not that we plan on buying it in so many years or wanting it or anything else. It's just, we don't mind one being. Anyone have anything else to add about that?
I I'll say first, though. I personally don't have any concerns about a conflict of interest between Seth and the board, and I have heard people, I've heard Karen say that she's concerned about a conflict of interest. I haven't heard specifically what, and if somebody gives me specific information, then I would really like to have it, because that would be really important for me to be enlightened. But I at this point, don't have a concern, and I
Moving on to Jack at the podium.
Hey, Jack Schneider. Hillary knows how to spell my name. Towns do not approve solar arrays. It's strictly done by the State Public Utility Commission. But developers have found that if they go to a town first and get a letter of support, and then they also go to the Rutherford Regional Planning Commission for another letter of support, that it makes their case in front of the PUC stronger. As part of our town plan, we have an enhanced energy portion of that that has a solar developer questionnaire. Novus Energy contacted us. We directed them to complete the questionnaire. It was reviewed by the Energy Committee. It was then passed along to the Planning Commission. Both of those committees felt that it was complete and accurate, and that this is a very good site for solar, because it doesn't infringe on any neighbors. And we sent a recommendation to the Select Board Chair asking that the Select Board send a letter of support. So Novus Energy followed our procedure. It has never been discussed that 10 years from now, the town's going to buy it. I would think if we got to eight or nine years from now, you know, maybe the town would want to take a look at it, but we're not committed in any way to that. So again, if the PUC decides that they want to build a nuclear plant there, they can do that. But, you know, the town supports this solar.
Yeah. Could I contribute a couple of pieces of update, perhaps? I would anticipate that Jim Leary would be the person to sign any contracts on behalf of the Brandon Industrial Corporation. It will certainly not be me. I would I would like to
She can't talk unless she's recognized by the board.
I have spoken with Mr., well, I emailed with Mr. Leary today, and he offers to field any questions about the Brandon Industrial Corporation that you might care to pose to him, anybody in the public. I will inquire with the Brandon Industrial Corporation Secretary as to the status of the Brandon Industrial Corporation's filing with the Secretary of State. This is the, tonight is the first time I've heard of any purchase option. The town has been on the, the town has been working on the basis that we would be receiving solar credits at a discount, and that that was the extent of our involvement in any solar development that the Brandon Industrial Corporation and Novus come to terms about.
Please, if you're going to talk, you need to come up here, and you need to be recognized. And I'm
All you have to do is look at their website, and the very first thing that comes up is the Path to Ownership Program. So it's right there available for everybody to see. And it would be great if Jim could actually register with the state and officially be affiliated with BIC. But also, it would be really nice if there could be an open meeting to explain to the citizens of Brandon what is being contemplated and what is not being contemplated. It's just a question of transparency. And as I said, I know these good people. If this makes sense, they're going to support you like you've never been supported before. A citizen should not be called a harasser and annoyance because they ask questions. That is our part of democracy, holding you guys accountable.
I just want to restate that what is being committed on the behalf of the town is the purchase of solar credits at a 15% discount from an array to be installed pursuant to an agreement that the Brandon Industrial Corporation reaches with the solar developer. That's the beginning and the end of what the town is interested in in this matter.
And the Select Board is only granting a letter that we support the solar project.
Board fundamentally in its letter is stating that it's a good site for solar development.
Any other public comment?
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing or agreeing, but I just have some concerns that have been raised here. Why did that statement come in that in 10 years, we'd be subject to buying it if we could? Where is that? Is it actually on paper? And and the best thing that I can see is if we could ask Attorney Leary to present some part of this this contract at a Select Board meeting, so we can all hear it from the President of that company. I just, I just think it's too confusing right now. And as I said, I'm not for or against. I just I just think that Karen has raised some some questions that need to be answered in that it's not about the people. It's actually about what's going on with the business and the agreements. And then to move on, I know this is a very small issue, but in this Davenport celebration, I know, is the town writing a grant that goes along with that? It's supposed to be filed, getting some support for that? And will the police be part of that? Will the town have to hire police during that celebration?
Mr. Chair, if I could take that. Ms. Mayo, Dr. Mayo, the the Davenport EV Festival just started two years ago. This would have been our third year, maybe our fourth year. COVID still got me messed up. We took a break this year, one because we lost a fantastic member of the committee that was making that happen. Not, she's still with us, but she backed away, got sick of doing a lot of her work. But our friends at Solar Fest have written, I mentioned it at our last meeting, at the last board meeting, this transportation, I'm sorry, this tourism grant, term grant. They wrote a $150,000 grant, and if they get that grant, they're the ones that are writing it. We would be partnering with them, along with other organizations all around town. If that were to happen, we'd kick off a 10-day, 11-day week, well, 11-day-long combined event that would have Solar Fest at one end, Bluegrass Fest at the other, our Davenport EV Fest somewhere in the middle with various events being added by different entities in the town. As far as the police go, I mean, story in the formative phase, but of that $150,000, if there were any sort of security issues, I would imagine that the group that is coming together to create this event would address those. Brandon's been pretty good about generally being good about police and security around our large events. And that would extend to a partnership we would have with any other organization in town to do a large event.
So generally speaking, the grant would cover all the finances for that celebration. And you'd be partnering them with them for part of those finances, any of them, actually.
Yes, all of that. I mean, this would be a net gain for the town of Brandon, if not just for the fact that a you know, an organization that's runs an event that has $70,000, $80,000, gets $150,000 for the rest of us to all partake in creating a fantastic event here in town that drives dollars and people into town to spend money, that we get local option taxes on it. Yeah, I mean, it would be fantastic event if we could make it happen, if they get the grant. So fingers crossed.
Anyone, is there anything to Mrs. Mayo's asking the question of, is there anything in writing about, sorry, about the 10-year buy, either Jack or Seth, or anything?
And like this room tonight, first time I've heard about a 10-year option to buy this solar. I have been at this from the point of view of this discounted electric credits.
Thank you. I'm just, as I'm saying, I think this, I think there's so much, for some reason, so much anger around this whole solar rate thing and that property. I just wish we could find a way that there could be some clarity with Attorney Leary. It sounds like the town manager is pretty set with it. And we're just hurting each other's feelings, and I don't think we mean to. So thank you.
Last call. Any other public comments?
Seems a little simple compared to the rest of us going on tonight. I talked to Bill and Seth about the fire hose on Newton Road watering the pot plants. Anyone know how that's being metered? As far as water usage, I talked to, I went to transfer station, like you said, and I talked to John. He wasn't sure. And he said he'd get a hold of Ray, but getting a hold of him is like getting blood from a stone. So if we could, I didn't know if anyone.
Right. So Mr. Mark who came in asks about a hose that's that, I don't know if it still is today.
I don't know. I haven't been by today.
It was, it was for a number of days connected to a fire hydrant on Newton Road. The town unfortunately doesn't deliver the water. We only treat the wastewater. And so the Prudential Board is really where I, the Prudential Committee of the Fire District is really the folks who would have an answer about who gave permission to whom and for what money, if any. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
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 It's like a whole separate whole separate enterprise.
Got in hold of anybody?
No.
Because I gotta pay for it. Sure thing, Dave. I hate to see the pot plants die, but someone's got to pay for the water.
Hey, Vicki, follow that one up.
I just have a question on
Uh, I just have a question on, I haven't seen any uh, notice to the public about the repeal of the, the Act 250 protection on lots between one and 10 acres.
It should be in the Brandon Reporter on Wednesday, the legal notice.
Does the 44 days for citizens to respond to that start from the date of it being?
Published.
Okay.
I mean, it, it actually starts, the statute says it starts from the date of the board action, but I was on vacation the week of the last board meeting and I didn't send this into the newspaper. So it's, it, there's a minimum, there's not a maximum number of days. Do you know what I mean? To notify the public? So if we notify the public and tell them you have 45 days from the, 44 days from the date of publication, which will be Wednesday, that is more than covering the obligation, which would have been 45 days, 44 days from the date of the vote. I was on vacation that week, but I still attended the board meeting, but the following day I didn't get in touch with the newspaper to place the ad.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? We came to a numerous conclusion. Okay. Um, now the board is going to recess from the town and move into, because we have an executive session after, but we still have not uh, done the sewer commissioners for the liquor meeting. So, uh, can I have a motion to recess the? Regular word.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we are going to uh, move into the liquor uh, control commission meeting.
Okay.
Uh, first would be to adopt the agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, no one?
And then I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, second?
Yes.
10 minutes.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I make a motion that we approve the special event catering permits.
Um.
Item three.
Item three. All in second?
I'll second. Yeah, sure.
So we have a motion in a second to approve the Red Clover uh, permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, no one? Public comment on liquor? Go ahead.
We're gonna need it if we're possible.
Thank you for that. It's now in the record.
Uh huh. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Uh, sewer commissioners report, uh, call to order, um, uh, gender adoption?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, approval of the minutes of the June 10th?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, item three?
Mr. Chair, they all left before um, the wastewater budget, which is a big impact on a lot of families' finances. Um, so you have the, you have the proposed budget. It's, it's uh, in four pages, dated June 20th, and then you have, uh, also dated June, June 20th. You have a one-page memo from me with five points. So I guess at this point, I would just ask if you had any questions of me related to any of the points in my memo or any specific line items in the budget.
No, I, I read it. It seemed to make sense to use funds this way this year because it's basically buying down our rate, but um, I think it makes sense.
Anyone want to make a motion to?
My, my only question is, are we gonna find ourselves, soon as I hear the word buying down?
Super good question. Yep.
We just went through this nonsense. Um.
Super good question. So, um, what, what, what I think Sue envisions and I, Jackie's still here, right? So what I think is envisioned at the town office is that in the coming year, we will finish up this uh, rate study that we've been doing and getting the academic help from the folks um, who are specializing in rural water and all this kind of stuff to form the most equitable possible sewer billing structure that we can, right? Best practice in.
We've talked about how it, it, it may be a shift which will.
There will be a shift, yes.
It will help, it will help alleviate some of the inequity.
Okay.
Because the nature of, the nature of healthy taxation is that it's progressive. And currently it's, it's barely equal and slightly regressive. And it's possible to construct a rate system that can be progressive. And so I think getting through this year in this way is a smart idea, knowing that we need to do the lift of redoing our rate structure next time.
So the, the idea was to avoid two big changes to rates, you know, whether increasing them this year and so on, so forth. And then next year changing around, whether we're talking about capacities or base rates or all the, or the consumption rate, all these other kinds of things. So the concept is to take the amount of money that the state requires us to spend on our system and the amount that we know we need to operate our system and kind of put them all into one holistic picture and then divide that out or apportion that out according to what the new, more equitable rate structure is. And just know that there will be shifting of costs between residential users and commercial users and multifamily dwellings and single-family dwellings and seasonal dwellings. There'll be, all these things are going to be moving at the same time as this newer um, total budget spending is applied.
We're gonna have sort of a, a big change no matter what.
And so we're gonna just change it on the,
okay.
On the basis of this study, yeah.
And.
Is that a question?
So I, I would need a.
Well, I, I, yeah, I, I'm just, I'm cautious about the paraphrase because I appreciate your, your comment. Um, the, the change we had the last couple of years, when we moved towards base rates primarily carrying the load and usage rates getting very, very small, ended up in a regressive taxation position. Um, but was necessary because that's where the cost actually originated. And it's very likely that when we do this change that we've just been talking about, it does represent a big change in some sense. But it's likely to um, reduce people's water costs in a progressive way for many of the users. And increase water costs for some of the users that have greater ability to pay.
Anything else you want to add, Jackie, to make sure?
Hey, Ashley, could you talk to the microphone? It's just so Zoom can hear you. I'm sorry.
So. Um, so I think the, the theory behind it is to adjust it so instead of a single base rate for everybody, it will be um, the single-family houses and then the commercial will be broken up into multiple different categories. So like the small um, stores and the restaurants and the industrial and like schools and um, all those different categories are all going to be different and going to be based on like a different rate structure. So, you know, a restaurant is definitely a much higher usage than, you know, say cars, you know, small store, one or two employees, very little usage. Um, you know? And the same with, you know, all of these, we're still trying to figure out what to do with like the um, the multifamilies, you know, whether like the one-bedroom apartments versus the single-family houses, you know, maybe the one-bedrooms are going to be in that like a point eight or a point nine and the the single families are going to be in a one um, to kind of figure out and kind of make that adjustment a little bit. Um.
Thank you.
So. Thank you. We'll, hopefully it will all kind of even out a little bit. Um, so some of the commercial side will definitely pick up. They're going to have a little bit bigger expense. Um, but some of the other smaller places will definitely go down a little bit. Thank you. So. That was really helpful, Jackie. Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the uh, budget?
I move that we adopt the budget. If you were given.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any further question? All in favor of approving the budget? Say aye.
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 Pose, no one? Now we need to consider to purchase a peak motor pump. And the bids are inside 10,188 dollars and 90 cents.
Right. So, Mr. Chair, this exceeds my spending authority. There are three quotes now at this point. The first time I brought this to you, we didn't have three quotes. Um, and it's been updated. And as always with something from Steve, there's a little bit of helpful background. So this is a 20, 20-plus year piece of equipment that we're replacing.
Okay.
I make a motion that we um, approve this expense.
Okay.
Second.
We need to pick one of the companies or? Hotel key?
His, his recommendation is for the low bidder. And he's filled out peak motor pump for being a low bidder.
Okay. Yep. Sorry.
All in favor of purchasing a pump for 10,188? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, no one? Public comment? Someone's better get up and throw something. Uh, none heard. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir. No further adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Undebatable.
Aye.
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 I'm going to reset for executive session.
Okay, we're pausing the um.
Uh, Cecil. Need a motion to go into executive session? Someone make that motion?
Okay, so we need a two-step process here. And so I'm going to make the first motion to find the premature general public knowledge of the pending contract negotiation with New England Police Benevolent Association Local 422 will clearly place the town of Brandon at a substantial disadvantage by disclosing its negotiation strategy. So that's my motion.
Second.
All in favor of the motion in a second?
Aye.
Aye.
And now I move to enter into executive session to discuss the town's pending labor relation agreement with New England Police Benevolent Association Local 422 per 1 VSA paragraph 313 sub A, sub 1, sub B for labor relations agreements with employees to include the town manager and the assistant town manager.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We now go into executive session. Hey, we are coming out of executive session. Need a motion to uh, ratify the police contract.
Yes, so I make a motion that the select board ratified the contract with the police department as it's been most recently um, shown to us.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Any further discussion? None heard. All in favor of ratifying the police contract? Please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, um? Contract is ratified. Seth can notify the union. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are done. Thank you very much.